We are going to have a public hearing now of our district-wide Code of Conduct. Notice is hereby given by the Board of Education, Brewster Central School District as follows: The Board of Education for the Brewster Central School District will hold a public hearing, solicit public comment regarding approval of the Code of Conduct pursuant to Education's Law 2801. Thank you, Ms. Goss.
Thank you, Dr. Jan Bortles. This is a document that is taken from EDG law and basically governs the conduct of anyone on school grounds and/or at a school event. So this is a very prescriptive process that is played out by the Commission of Education. And we have worked in close concert with our legal counsel on this. It should be noted that this is basically just a compilation of all of our policies and practices now in one document. So, just a couple of quick things. The building level handbooks will still be operational. Every student will still receive those. This is a separate document that oversees the entire system. This will be up as an annual readoption. And tomorrow morning, we will have a Google form up for people to comment on the document and to give us any feedback. We will then present that information to you because this document will be up for approval at an action item at our September 12th meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. So the floor is now open for public remarks relative to this section of our discussion, and only this particular section. We'll be talking about other matters later. Yes?
Yes. My name is...
That would help.
Hello?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Besides the notification of the Code of Conduct changing besides this one as of today, have you published anything regarding the Code of Conduct being up for review within the Brewster Central School District or within... And what has that have been published?
So you're saying you need more time to review the document?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Are you asking for more time to review the document?
No, you're holding a public hearing. I believe Mrs. Goss said it is going to be on September 12th.
Okay.
How much notification have you given the residents of the Brewster Central School District and their parents, notification that the Code of Conduct is up for review?
Okay.
Have you done this in any publications, newspapers? I checked the Brewster Central School District website. It is not there as of a half an hour ago. This is the first I've heard of it. I believe it is New York State law that you do need to publish this information so parents are aware of it.
Mrs. Rimes, this has been on our website since last week in Board Docs and under Public Content where we publish all of our Board of Education information. Okay, and this is exactly why we wanted to talk about it tonight, have an opportunity for feedback, and then revisit it again at our September 12th meeting.
So besides putting it on the Brewster Central School District and it appearing on here, what other public notifications will the Brewster Central School District be notifying individuals that the Code of Conduct is up for review?
This is in line with our advice from our legal counsel, which is to do this as we would with any other public hearing, which is exactly what we have done. And just to reiterate, and I apologize if I wasn't clear before, there's nothing new about this. This is all a compilation of all of our policies in one area. Anything that is in here has either gone through a policy committee or has been our practice in our buildings.
Okay, so nothing's actually changed, but it already exists?
Right.
Within the Brewster Central... So why is it up for review?
It's an annual requirement that the Department of Education asks us to implement.
It's also in the lower HUD event section.
I'm sorry.
Lower HUD, in the events section. It's posted there as well.
Okay, I did look at the Brewster... I'm gonna have to look at the website again because apparently I am not looking. Could you? Yes, because I was having difficulty before with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. I have two questions, just for clarification, because I know this is kind of following what's standard. In Section 5, Visitors to the Schools, number three and seven. So number three, it says, "Parents, persons of parental relations wishing to speak with a specific teacher concerning the progress of a child must make an appointment with the teacher in addition to obtaining the permission of the school's principal." It doesn't explain how that is, because normally as parents, we've just emailed the teacher, we've set up an appointment. Does the teacher then get the official approval, who would then confirm the appointment with us at that point?
Okay, so just to confirm, you're talking about number three?
Yes.
Just number three?
Yeah, because normally, yeah.
Yes, typically, the teacher would notify the main office that a parent or person of parental relation would be coming to the main office.
Okay, I just don't want to confuse, because I don't want the principals of the buildings getting 3,000 emails from parents or whatever. So maybe, is it possible to add in the language just something, in addition to the teacher obtaining... Just putting on a teacher so that they're not emailing both, ceasing the principal? Just a thought, yeah? And the second question was regarding number seven in the same section, which has to do with any visitor wishing to inspect school records, et cetera. The language actually seems a little lenient to me, because we have a lot of... There's a confidentiality that we have with students, so when I read it, I was just a little bit confused. It seemed...
So, what page do you want to...
Oh, 12. 12, sorry.
So if I'm interpreting this part correctly, any visitor wishing to inspect could be a member from the county such as Child Protective Services, maybe a...
A parent, I don't know. I mean, whoever. Even with the state or Child Detective Services, there's still laws that we don't happen to sort of allow them. But it just seems very open to me, like someone can just come in and request, and we'll follow some rules and see what happens. It just seems a little bit lenient in the wording, that's all, for me.
Yeah, maybe there's a better term for that, because we have different policies that talk about if a Child Protective Service representative comes in, what are the steps they take? Also, if we have a police officer who wants to come and talk to, you know, a school official about a student, let's say.
Right, there's still a protocol for even them.
Right.
And so, yeah.
Okay.
Those are the two things that I...
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? If thing done, we'll come back up for a regular format and we'll ask the administrators for their remarks. How about you, Ms. Colicchio? You look cool, calm and collected down there.
Good evening. Just a few things this evening. We are in resources, ready for our students to come back. We have new employee orientation on Tuesday, the 29th. I have a full day scheduled for 16 instructional employees and a half day scheduled for two non-instructional employees. In an effort to increase our pool of substitute teachers this year, we will be holding a substitute teacher recruit fair on Jersey, September 7th. A number of administrators have volunteered to assist with the interviews. And we just finished hiring the last two instructional employees. They're on tonight's agenda, a .6 E&amp;L teacher and a .6 special education.
What's got to be your feeling?
Yes.
The whole staff?
All staff. With you.
Okay, well, we're all down at that end. Mr. Carlson, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing well. Good afternoon. A couple of reminders. 2017-18, home to school, school to home. Bus ride information is now available on the parent portal of Infinite Campus, and that's initiative that we put underway this year to safeguard student information, provide real-time updates to changes in transportation, and also eliminate a cost of paper mailing. So you can visit our website, www.brewsterschools.org backslash transportation. There's a route assignment notification letter. In that letter, there's links to instructions. If you haven't yet created a parent portal account, you're able to do so using those instructions, and we're very excited about this new initiative. Our transportation department will be hosting a bus orientation for our incoming kindergarten students next week on Wednesday and Thursday, the 30th and 31st. A letter will go out to our kindergarten parents notifying them of the availability of this orientation. And we are going to have four sessions, so hopefully there will be a time available for parents, guardians, and their children to come and familiarize themselves with riding the bus. I'm sure you've noticed across the street, there is a significant amount of construction going on over at JFK. We just had a construction meeting this afternoon. We're very encouraged by the news that we're hearing from our construction managers and our architects and our contractors. So we have two weeks ago before the opening of the school year, but again, we're very encouraged by what we're hearing, and we're looking forward to opening up the school with our improved instructional spaces. However, we did learn this summer that certain non-instructional spaces may not be open in time for the school year, and those non-instructional spaces are namely the auditorium and also the idea room. And this is something that's been on our radar since earlier in June, when we awarded the contracts, I should say, June of last year, when we awarded the contracts for this construction. But most importantly, all instructional space will be available for the opening of the school year, so no fears of not being able to open on time. We're excited and we're looking forward to completing construction. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. For those important updates. Hi, I didn't forget you.
That's okay.
You're back.
I just have two brief announcements tonight. The first is regarding Project Lead the Way at CD-Star. So we have three teachers attend three-day training at Bucknell University. They are Mrs. Jackie Fago, Mrs. Megan Johnson, and Mr. Steve Koschel. So they are now certified launch teachers, lead launch teachers. So that means they can come back and turnkey that training with our staff at CD-Star. So we are excited, but they are beyond excited. They were falling over themselves, talking about what a wonderful experience the training was and how this would really transform how students experience a STEM or a steamish type of activity and unit at CD-Star. So we're on track for every student at CD-Star to experience at least one Project Lead the Way unit, and this is in addition to the expansion that we have at the middle school from one to three elective courses, one in each grade. And as you know, we're continuing the engineering sequence at the high school as well, so we'll have Intro to Engineering, Principles of Engineering as well, so we're very excited about that. My second announcement is in regards to our social-emotional programs. So this summer, we have spent some time meeting with two core teams who will be implementing our K-5 Ruler Program and our 612 COE program. They have... Both teams have planned opening day activities for the staff, so the staff will be introduced to the maintenance of the program as well as have kind of an overview of what the year looks like in terms of those programs. And we were really fortunate this year to be able to have training from Dr. Bernadette Melnick, who is the creator of COE, and Dr. Mark Rackett, who as we know is integral to the Ruler Program. So we're learning from the best, and we have the best that are turning around and coming to our own staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. And Dr. Hennig, how are you tonight?
Thank you, Dr. Jan Bortles. First of all, I want to thank the parents who did come out for this town meeting, and I want to apologize that you didn't get time, and we obviously recognize that, and we'll be working to make sure that we create another venue where you do have time and that we give you that opportunity. And so, as I said, I apologize that we ran out of time, because we certainly wanted to have you involved and participating. The Wells rededication occurred today. It was a really great program that honored Henry H. Wells, who was namesake, bestowed upon the Henry H. Wells Middle School. We learned a great deal about him as a patriot, as a philanthropist, and as a good civic community member, and we were pleased with the work of the PTA in collaboration with the Southeast Museum, which was responsible for that rededication and that panel, as well as all the great staff, Mr. Clark and Mr. Jesus, and a number of other people who are very instrumental in making that possible. So I want to thank them for making possible this really important ceremony. As Mr. Carlson indicated, a great deal of construction is taking place this summer. There are 100,000 square feet of work that took place, 100,000 square footage at JFK Elementary School, and every foot has been touched. Every square foot has been touched. So I asked the architect today if we had to rebuild, if we had to build the school today, another elementary school today, what it would cost. And he indicated that it would cost $50 million to build a new elementary school. And in terms of the bond itself, about $20 million. Of that, $38.9 million was dedicated to the JFK Elementary School, so it looks like we got a really good deal. And it's phenomenal work that's occurred across the district, not only at JFK, but at the CD-Star Intermediate School. Those four additional classrooms are really spectacular, as well as the other small group instruction rooms and other work that's occurred in the district. So we're very, very proud of that work and thank all the buildings and grounds and the studio staff has been working tirelessly to make sure that the buildings will be ready and open next week. I'd like to welcome back Deputy Michael Nunez, who has been out for a while. He's the SRO at serving both CD-Star and H.H. Wells Middle School. We're happy to have him back. And we're welcoming Sergeant Michael Zabo, who's our new Youth Bureau Supervisor. He was here this evening, and hopefully we'll be able to meet him at a future board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Kind of sad news. I learned today that a former superintendent of ours, Dr. Mark Lewis, passed away a couple of days ago. And Dr. Lewis, it's ironic, I'm talking about him tonight right here in the Performing Arts Center. His contribution to our district was the beginning of what turned out to be an 18-year effort by us, the community, to rebuild and refurbish the entire school district. I always resist the temptation of comparing superintendents or boards. I instead characterize them as steps in a process, or runners in a relay race in the evolution of the Brewster Central School System. So certainly, Dr. Lewis and the board that he worked with back then in 1999 through 2005 set us on the path that we're still traveling down today, and that is the modernization of the Brewster Central School System. So we are indebted to him, and we wish him peace wherever he is now.
We'll move on now to our presentations, recognitions, and discussions, the first of which is the Brewster Central School District logo, but what do you have to say about that?
Well, in light of the fact that the town hall meeting didn't... I don't want to say it was cut short, but there really wasn't enough time to allow the proper discussion, a complete discussion. We can partially do it here, but there would just need to be another one. So I think if we possibly table it so that we can answer those questions, there's a Q and A, because I would need that information as well to consider. You know, so just a suggestion, we could possibly still discuss some of it, so it is at least recorded, or we can just table it for the next meeting, which is a suggestion I wanted to make. Does anyone else have...
So the motion is, in fairness to everybody, particularly the folks who showed up earlier with a need to speak and who did not get the opportunity to speak, we will not be doing anything at this moment. We have a motion to table. It needs to be seconded?
We'll second it now.
Sure.
This is a presentation, not an action item.
Okay, that's a good point.
Do we have to have a motion to table it? Or can we just have a presentation and then have another presentation? I'm asking, this is a question.
Yes, we need a motion to table it because it's on the agenda, but we could still have a discussion without any decisions tonight.
Because there's no decision anyway, because it's in the presentation section.
Sometimes that could come out of it, so we would have to acknowledge that we would not make any decisions on it tonight, if you wanted.
I think there are probably people who are here who maybe want to hear the presentation and be heard, and then we can do it again.
Okay.
Okay, so that makes even more sense. So, and first...
One or two letters sent out, wanting the employees to think that... I have a letter right here stating that you all decided on this new logo, and then another one sent out saying that it's not decided on. So we're here for a reason, not to be, you know...
Okay, fair enough. So let me try to put the pieces together. Let me try to put the pieces together, because no one's accusing anybody of being stupid. We want to get this out. So, if I'm hearing what you're saying and suggesting correctly, we need to move forward with a little bit of a presentation and a discussion, but we are promising that no decision will be made tonight, because there's people who are in fact missing from the conversation. I really can't hear you.
This letter said it was already decided on.
Okay, I can clarify that too. Nothing has been decided. The only forum where it could have been decided is an open board meeting. This is part of that process. So A, it hasn't been decided, B, it hasn't really even been discussed. And if we are to do that, it's got to be held in a full public meeting, and some of that might be an error. Things change. We're here tonight to clarify and to move forward. Maybe. Okay, so what can we present by way of the logo discussion?
The logo that's associated with the Strategic Coherence Plan, and that's the only thing it's associated with, that is the only thing. There's never been a conversation about it being associated with athletics or change in the athletic wear, none of that was part of it. So I state that emphatically at the outset, because I think a lot of confusion unfortunately came from that. I think it was the wording in the original message to the staff. There was a reference made to the athletic wear, which I think, in the interest of trying to clarify that the athletic wear would not be affected, I think people interpreted it to mean that it would be affected. So that is an absolute error, and I think that, unfortunately, the people who were here are not here to hear that, but that is the clarification. The logo that you have is the logo associated only with our Strategic Coherence Plan. That is the only association. It is not replacing our Brewster bear. It is not replacing athletic wear. It is not replacing anything that the bear is associated with. Our bear is our mascot. It's been our mascot. It remains our mascot. It'll be on everything. The logo is associated with the 21st century roadmap, our Strategic Coherence Plan, which was adopted last spring, and it articulates our commitment to making sure that our children are prepared for this world that's not about a test score and about, you know, how well you score on your ACT or your SATs. They really have to show what they can do in college and the world of work. And so we are dedicated, like other school districts around. There are other school districts, North Salem being the closest, that's engaged in the same work. They've actually engaged in it a lot longer than we have, and we really are, we've identified the skills that are associated with that plan that are critical for all children to have, critical thinking, problem solving, and innovation are embedded in that, along with communication and collaboration, perseverance, adaptability, and civic responsibility. So that logo was created to mark or represent our commitment to implementing that plan. And so there's a lot of work that we are engaged in now and much more that's ahead of us. The plan this year is to integrate those skills into curriculum, to instruction, assessment, professional learning, and the learning environment. We've had a lot of people talking about those skills. We ended our school year, actually, on the 23rd, talking about those skills, that we're going to start integrating those. We're going to ask our educators to look at ways that they're currently integrating those skills, and we're going to be replicating those things that are being done really well by our educators and supporting that and making sure that other educators see that, and helping others who might need some assistance to, you know, to embed those skills much more deeply. So that logo was only to associate and to symbolize to everyone looking, to our colleges who are looking at us, to families, as our Realtor Kevin Callahan indicated, you know, it's one of the qualities that others who are interested in buying their property in the community are interested in, and how are we preparing children for the 21st century? So that symbol recognizes that we are aware that we need to and that we're dedicated to making sure that we, over the next few years, because our plan is a five-year plan, that over the course of the next five years, we're really committed to making sure that all children acquire those important skills so that they succeed in this world that's going to ask them, you know, over the course of their lives, to probably change jobs 10 to 15 times. And as Ms. Nielsen mentioned earlier, the jobs that a lot of our young people have, that a lot of the jobs that they will have don't currently exist. So we have to make sure that we embed all of those skills. So that logo is associated with that plan. It's not associated with changing our mascot or any part of that.
Can I ask a question? I'm just curious, maybe this will shed a little clarity for everyone else, since you're not, you don't have a plan to change the Brewster bear, which I initially minded out after, like, oh no, I won't clear. Where will we see that logo present? Because if you're not changing it, then it's almost maybe a non-issue for some people.
Well, you know, we had thought that, which is why we shared it. I mean, so that was the thinking, that it was a non-issue, and I'm glad you brought that up, because there was no question that it was, you know, there was no discussion on our committee about changing, you know, this logo, switching this logo off and replacing the bear.
Why haven't it? Why aren't you changing it? Why are you doing it?
We're not changing the Brewster bear. No, we're not. Yeah, it's to represent the work associated with the implementation of our Strategic Coherence Plan.
This logo does not represent my child's test score.
I'm sorry?
This logo does not represent my child's test score.
What?
What you've sent to my child's prospective college represents my child's not test.
Well...
And most people see this as you just said, "Well, we all were..." Not saying about...
Well, it's actually, the reason why children are there is because the plan is all about children, and that's one thing that we really wanted to convey, that, you know, we wanted to make sure that the school district, and that's important too, and we're not saying it's not. Right. Let me explain the logo.
Education and sports, not just sports, education and sports.
Right. So the logo represents both the social-emotional and the academic goals? No, I can't finish saying what I needed to say.
Pardon me for a second, please. This is kind of my job. We really can't have discussions in the middle of presentations. It doesn't work. We're seeing that it doesn't work.
And you expect us not to react to this? Remember, you're your boss. You guys work for us, Senator.
Thank you.
The question that was asked by an audience member on her turn was, how is it, where is it going to be used? So maybe we can answer that question.
Yeah, I was attempting to answer that. So it's going to appear on all of the work associated with our Strategic Coherence Plan. It'll be on our website. We haven't built the website. That will be the repository for all of the samples of what is it, you know, what does teaching children to think critically look like? What does a lesson look like that embeds critical thinking? How do we teach perseverance? What rubrics are the educators using to measure the level of perseverance? What rubrics are children using? What resources are we using? So that's, those are the next steps over the next few years, is to develop that web presence, and that logo will be there. That logo will be on all the materials, so that when anyone in our school just... so that when anyone in our school district, and not everyone in our school district is quite aware of the work that we're doing yet. So, our goal is to make sure that we have examples. So, if someone sees that symbol, we want them to think about that Strategic Coherence Plan. You know, symbols are powerful, and we want them to think about that plan and to think about those skills, and then to begin to look at the degree to which they are implementing or integrating those skills within those five areas that I described before. And then, we're obviously going to, we need to symbolize as a system that we are dedicated. Lots of school districts are, have done very similar work, where we looked at other excellent models. You know, we're not imitating anyone, but we looked at other excellent models. And there are other districts around us who are deeply engaged and looking at themselves and asking, how would you know that we're a system committed to educating children in the 21st century? So, we want to make sure that you know that we're aware that the world has changed and the expectations for children have changed. And we want to make sure that we send children throughout the system, not when they get to the high school, that we suddenly start talking about embedding all of these important skills. But as early as kindergarten, we want children at an age-appropriate level to be able to say how they are thinking critically, how they're solving problems, how they are persevering and adapting and are civically responsible. That symbol will be on the calendar along with the bear, again, as a way to symbolize to everyone that we're committed to making sure that we are preparing children for this ever-changing world where it may not affect us in the audience and the adults here, but it will very much affect them as young people going into college where some of them, you know, for the first time, you know, are encountered with, you know, not letter grades that they received in high school or middle school, but they have to work very differently and they encounter, you know, those situations where they fail and they kind of fall apart. So, the social, emotional, and academic skills that we're imparting are very important for children's future success in life and work. And we're committed to making sure that we have examples of, and that symbol is, and that logo is to represent the commitment to that work.
These words make the logo, doesn't it?
Well, the children are to symbolize. Do you want me to explain it? Let me, you want me to explain it?
Everybody else.
Let me explain it. So, the logo with the happy children, I call it the happy children logo, is to symbolize hope and looking forward to the future and embracing the future with confidence. Yeah, it is to, embracing an unknown future with confidence. The world is the world that they're going to have to participate in as citizens. Their world is not just going to be here in Brewster or here in New York State or here in the US of A, it's going to be in the world. And it's also to symbolize, you know, the different levels. And in fact, that teaching children those skills is not just something that starts at the high school, which is why we want it children at different levels. So, the fact that it's a student-centered logo is purposeful, it's intentional, because we didn't want to talk about 21st century skills and not talk about children first.
Well, this is what you're saying for now.
Okay, so...
I invite children to... And a couple of the people here. The bear, a one parent inherent, I noticed. My daughter's a lawyer, my daughter's a psychologist. I had another daughter that's a marine. My son was trained to be an Navy SEAL. So, this does not make my child's sad. It's you and me.
Okay, fair enough, but we have a question in the back, you've been waiting patiently, thank you.
I'm just, I need some clarification. When we get a letter home from school, anything, transportation or anything, it's not going to contain this logo, it's just the bear?
I'm just going to repeat the question if this is correct. You're asking if any letters that come home regarding transportation or any sort of information, will it have this logo as well? Yeah.
We want it to coexist, we want the bear on one side and the logo on the other.
All the letterhead, are we getting all this letterhead?
Letterhead, the calendar, you know, those kinds of things. Our Brewster bear backpack will have the bear where the bear normally is and then the logo on the opposite side.
So, the cost of the logo was like under $1,100, right?
It was, yeah, $1,023 to develop the graphic.
The new letterhead?
I'm sorry?
Is there a cost on the new letterhead?
Well, we don't print any letterhead, it's an electronic template, so we just attach the logo there.
They put a paragraph next to it to describe what it means? They drive a paragraph next to it?
We will, we will send that out, I think that's a very good point. We'll make sure that we send out a description of what that is, but it won't be on... Well, we won't do that, we'll try to make sure that it's, it's, I'm sorry?
There's so much going on in this school and you're paying attention to all of them.
Well, we didn't want to, we didn't want to pay attention to it, yeah.
I want to keep track of you, you're waiting, all right? I have a question from you, I have a question from you also. I think I'm missing somebody, am I right? But, right there, first...
So, my question is tied into the discussion, I just want to keep that line of communication open. So, will you guys talk about the Strategic Coherence Program that you're working on? One, can you please give an idea of what it is? Before, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, I'm just kidding, you said... But you were, you were talking a bit about this program, and you guys, instead of just lecturing, how will our children be learning differently? You know, can you give an example of that type of teaching that we'll be seeing over the next year or two? One, and two, is this a state-funded program that we're bringing in? That was kind of my second question to do with that.
I mentioned earlier that the work this coming year is to really take those definitions that we ended with, that the committee came up with, and start using those and start, you know, working in the buildings, you know, there are different group settings, or settings for educators to work in, PLCs, and we have some professional learning days, department meetings and so forth. We want educators to first and foremost look at in their own work, how they're integrating, how they're currently integrating, we have very talented educators, how they're currently integrating critical thinking as well, for example, into curriculum. So, how do we teach children to think critically? We have some examples that are very easily seen, you know, in different places across the school district, that teachers are not standing in front of the class and lecturing. They are doing more project-based learning or problem-based learning where they focus on a big idea, a theme, and the children actually have to explore that theme through research, through collaboration, through doing some other authentic kinds of tasks which involve perhaps, you know, reaching out beside, you know, beyond the school walls. You know, it might be that they have to Skype or to Google Chat or some other structure to get information. They may not necessarily write a paper, it may be that they do a TED Talk, and that's actually happened here in the high school.
I see the big presence inside, so I've been happy with seeing that already, you know, something, you know, I don't know if that's part of your program, but I mean, that's been good. I like seeing the hands-on in the classroom, you know, kids learning, you know, hands-on and sense-making. I mean, there's been a lot of podcasts, I'm not I think, but just answer, is this a state-funded, like, pilot program ever?
Well, Strategic Coherence Plans are not connected to the state. It's an articulation of a school district's commitment or plan, if you will, a blueprint for how they're going to implement, in our case, certain social, emotional, and academic skills, which research, the world of work, colleges, they are really important for children to have. So, it really has little to do with the state, the state standards, obviously, we have to follow, and we do, and we embed those skills, the plan is to embed the skills and the content and into those standards so that we certainly are not neglecting our responsibility to implement state standards. But, and Ms. Gosh described earlier a program called Project Leap the Way, which is a STEAM STEM program. We're, we now, I think, are up to probably six classes. We just added the program at the CB Star Intermediate School. In the following year, we'll be adding it to K-2. That's part of the commitment, that's what's different in terms of the expectations, that it is not just a focus on the content, but what children can do with the content. And that's a real important part of this 21st century learning that we now are 17 years into. So, I, it's sort of, you know, it's sort of, you know, sort of strange to reference 21st century because we are indeed operating in it. But we, in many cases, are operating a lot like a 21st century system, you know, where there is a lot of emphasis on testing. And again, we obviously have to prepare children for those tests, but we can certainly teach those skills, and that's what we're committed to doing over the next couple of years without focusing on multiple-choice tests that don't really get at what children know and what they can do. And we're interested in making sure that we do more of that. But that will take time, because lots of us, you know, have, we're trained to teach in a very different way. And we also are, you know, trying to gradually get from underneath the system of testing that really has taken a lot of our time and attention.
Thank you.
I have a question here, and dead center. Okay, so, Ms. Kovaleski?
Just up there on this board, the logo, just for parents not here, is that an idea of what, should a decision be made, what it might look like?
Okay, so, I take responsibility for trying to conceptualize this.
That's what I was, okay.
If you heard this before, stop listening for the next two minutes, but this is a truism for me. Fifth grade, in the Bronx, we're studying the Civil War. My heroes are, in real life, Mickey Mantle and Willie Mays. My hero in school was Henry Clay. I know, I was a weird kid even then. Why? The great compromiser and his approach made sense to me. He still does. So, where are you going to find me? You won't find me on that side, you won't find me on that side. You're going to find me trying to find something in the middle that makes sense to the most. So, when we were on the phone one day, I did my little graphics finger-majig, and I sent this off, I said, well, why don't we just do this? Oh, by the way, I'll confess, I stole the concept from Pleasantville. I was in a meeting with the superintendent, Pleasantville, Dr. Fox, and I said, Mary, how did you guys do this, we're so stuck right now, help me out? She goes, Steve, it was simple, look at our website. The panther is still up on the left side, right where we put our bear. The panther in Pleasantville is up there on the left side. There, as crazy about sports as we are, no one touches the panther, nobody's touching the bear. But over on the right side, for Pleasantville, you're going to see the tree of learning. That's what they felt was important, to represent where they're going with 21st century skills. I says to myself, self, if it works in Pleasantville, maybe it'll work here. And Byram and North Salem and other places, they're struggling with the same thing. How do you keep your identity, the truth of who you've been in your culture for all these years? And how do you embrace what you know you have to embrace as you move forward on behalf of your children? It's a balancing act. Okay, am I leaving someone out? Okay, please, you know who you are, please stand up.
The one in the back, you've been waiting for a while, you. Yeah, in the back.
There you go, good. I can be able to hear you.
I'm really worried the students are going to be upset about that logo. It's that, but it looks like it's, were students involved in this logo, like, developing this logo? Their ideas? Or was it just shown in the room? Who created that logo? Because it doesn't pick academics. It does, all the wonderful things that you're saying, it doesn't really, it doesn't scream that to me as well as other people in the community that I'm around all. Very hard. And I don't see how we can fix that, is my question. Like, it doesn't scream that to me. I love the tree, it's really learning. I'm sure that tree really represents everyone. I think this is just kids happy, like you said, and that doesn't make the strategic argument. And all the wonderful thing you were saying, that what's happening in our school districts. So, I just wanted to see, I just wanted to find out, is it involved? It's the idea, my guess is...
Okay, I'll just start from the beginning first. So, a lot of this is the same discussion you had about what is art? As many people who are in this room will have those many definitions. So, there's some artwork here, there's some symbolism here, and it's not going to make exact sense to each and every one of us. But when the day is done, is it the logo, the mascot that makes the school? Or is it us who chooses the symbol, who lives with it for three, four, five years, and then the next thing you know, the apple means something, the swoosh in Nike means something? And the symbol takes on a life when people have lived with it for a while, even though on that first night, they might have said, are you crazy? Symbols look like that.
Yeah, but you didn't really answer my question.
About how...
For kids and moms?
Sure.
The academic part of me, yes, we looked at it and said, well, that's... If I just now said, well, that's too simple, but how is it to be exactly what you're saying? I like the symbol, I like the idea of the symbol concept as well, of course, but I just don't see how that makes sense. I asked him, and what it is, I have to get it back and park it. So, I don't really understand how that makes sense.
Well, there were just as many opinions, and I would like for our board members who were on the committee to also share some of the conversations we had. So, we, this group had worked on this, were part of the original group who actually met to develop the Strategic Coherence Plan. So, they've been with, you know, the idea of these skills for a fair amount of time. We added other members in August who were not on the original team, who were educators, teacher leaders in the buildings. So, you know, they had a lot of knowledge as well of the goals of the Strategic Coherence Plan, as well as administrators, who again, were up there from day one when we actually sat to work with the person that we worked with, who's worked with a number of districts, including North Salem, they're working right now with Crote Karman and Pearl River and other districts, as Dr. Jambore stated, who are engaged in this work. So, we asked the graphic designer at Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses, who happens to also work with the same districts that I mentioned and many more in the region, who are engaged in this task of trying to find a way to represent their Strategic Coherence Plans. So, we asked them, you know, to read our plan and come up with what they think would be a way to represent that. You know, what are some of those symbols that they are seeing as they look around the region and around, you know, the state? To see, what, how do you represent social, emotional, and academic skills? How do you promote an image of students and worldliness and global awareness? So, the graphic designer came up with a number of designs and brought that to the committee. The committee, I think probably universally, didn't like any of them. We started that way, and that was consistent. And the way that we moved past that was to think about, you know what? Maybe we are not where we want to be, and maybe this logo is an aspiration. It's a place that we're going, and we need a way to symbolize that we're going there. And we want to hold on to some ideas about what's really important on the logo, which is this is a child-centered Strategic Coherence Plan, that it's not just, you know, lofty ideas, that we really want to focus on whole, you know, a true whole-child approach. So, we went around and around in circles, and that we, you know, tore all of those samples, you know, apart. And we, you know, each of us had ideas about what it should look like and who should be there. But a common denominator emerged as we went along, in that we wanted it to be, we wanted children to be present in the logo. We didn't feel that we could be a school system and not have children there, that something was wrong with that, and sort of like being a car dealership and not having cars in the ads. We felt very strongly about representing the world, because we are in the world. You know, we are preparing children for a place where they're going to, you know, interact with lots of people and do lots of things. And the fact that their arms are stretching out symbolizes, as I said earlier, confidence, a sense of hope, a sense of moving forward. So, those are the things that we kind of, you know, that resonated with us, and we kind of stayed with that. And we all agreed that, you know, maybe, you know, it may not be personally something that we might choose, but could we live with the fact that it is our first step at trying to find a representation of our Strategic Coherence Plan? And we were all satisfied that, you know, we felt that the committee were, and we did have two high school students on the committee, they felt the same way. And so, we put forth this particular logo. There was a, and as I said, we felt that we wanted to have a representation of real children that represent, you know, the movement across the, you know, K-12 spectrum.
Can I, can I... There was an attempt, and to the people in the room who are on the committee who know who I'm talking about, there was an attempt to take every word that Dr. Henry Piedmont just said and put it on a paper, and it was done. And it was this big, this big, colors, Ms. Vega was laughing because she knows what I'm talking about. And it was huge, and it was confusing, and it was all over the map. And we realized that's not what a logo, a statement piece is. And Dr. Jambore, you said it, like, when Apple put the apple on, sure, now we all know what... And Dr. Jambore, you said it, like, when Apple put the apple on, sure, now we all know what it means, it's apple at the beginning, that there was apple, this is something new. I remember looking at it saying, "What the heck is the apple for? Who needs an apple? What does apple mean?" But it was synonymous now with those kinds of computers. So I think that's, you know, but we all remember that drawing of every element, and then how do you draw a picture of communication? How do you draw a picture of cohesiveness and all those soft skills, that whole child? It's really hard to do. It's easy to open a book and draw a picture of a book, it's easy to have a pen, but what do we want to send these children out? So, the best way to describe it is, as we go down the road, this, people are gonna know who we are, and they're gonna know, "Oh, that thing means Brewster." And look at all the things that Brewster is.
I'm not necessarily saying that I think this is like out of left field, but I just want you to empathize with the majority of people, what I hear is like a resounding, "But why? We are Brewster bears, that's how we identify with our community." No, no, I'm just, just so you can empathize, understand, that's why you're getting so much pushback, and that I think that that's how the community identifies with the school system, and so you're telling us, "Okay, we're rebranding a bit, but we're not, but we're just gonna tweak it." And I think it's, I think it's just a little hard for people to readjust their way of thinking because they have always been a tough one, you know, so it just, I don't know if that helps, but I think that's why you're getting so much.
Can I just comment? So I was actually over three years ago, when the idea of, or the questions were coming up about alignment in the district between buildings, and how can we function more cohesively as a district educationally, that discussion was happening. And so from there came the idea that we need this strategic coherence planning committee to come together and to do this work. And then out of that came the things that were discussed earlier. I was on that original committee, which met in the evening, so it made it a little easier. So, and I was part of the original discussion to push for that type of alignment and cohesiveness within the district. I couldn't continue with the work, but I fully support it. So, and I wanted to comment to your statement specifically because I'm on the board, I was on the original committee, I support the work of the committee that's continuing, but I also had the same reaction. You know, I also was not part of that, that every stage that continued after the original plan was created, and didn't have an initial great reaction to this logo either, and had the same questions. So I just want the public to also know that we are being critical with the process as well, and in trying to understand the need, and what does this have to do with the educational mission, and in just evaluating and considering everyone's opinions as well. So, there's a process and we're in it, and, you know, we'll have another meeting still about it, but there's more questions, I don't know if you wanna take them.
Question, sure.
I support the logo, I support it, it's wonderful.
We can't hear you guys yet, I'm sorry.
I support the logo, I think it's wonderful, I just think, I just, what you just said tonight needs to go out to students now. This is how that logo is representing Brewster. So we can be proud of that logo, just as everybody, all that effort into the strategic coherence plan. That's why people get freaky, because, "What? We have a logo? What are you talking about?" We don't fully understand until you just explain all of this. That should be, look what we plan on adopting as part of our community. This is why we have that logo. We just got, this is gonna be our logo, and no, no real connection to the strategic coherence. It would benefit you and save the class, screaming and yelling, if we just communicate that and send people out, like, to the community that this is why, how that logo, what you just told me, relates to that strategic coherence plan. Because I didn't get it, but I'm understanding it better now. That's just like.
There's also an audience who has a question.
Ms. Cosma, welcome back.
I would ask this question if I was up there too. I've written it out for the previous.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I would ask this question.
Hold on a second, Mary. There you go.
Oh, thank you. What I said was, I would ask this question if I was up there too. And I had written it out, so I'm going to read it, because I was hoping to submit it at the last meeting. If there was a sense that a secondary logo was necessary, and in line of the fact that we have an excellent art department and a very talented students in our art department, why wasn't the task of designing the logo given to the very people who would be educated under it, who would be living in our 21st century and working in our 21st century? Perhaps a competition, given the parameters to work within, would have demonstrated communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and perseverance, and may have given the community better buy-in.
That's not a bad idea, Mary, and who knows, it could still happen. There's been no decision.
I couldn't tell from the very beginning whether we were continuing the discussion or not, from the motion and the not motion and the presentation, but I certainly think that it may be something that we could give thought to, perhaps before the next meeting with some ideas about it, and before you present it to the community again as well.
Sure. So, you know, you've heard Sony's admission, I have an admission too. I'm not married to logos. Logos are invented by human beings to communicate stuff. I'm more married to figuring out what the stuff is, and that we're doing the stuff of education well. At some point, we'll figure out how we're communicating it with the logo. For me, that's not a top priority, but I mean, I'm serving as a member of a board. I'll facilitate this discussion, but it's not something that gets me very excited, you know. I would really like to know what we're doing day in, day out, to get our kids ready for this century. And if somebody comes up with a clever idea to have to symbolize that, terrific.
Give it to a teenager. I mean, does the system better? Does work? You spend time, you establish a committee for a logo, when things are really needed in our school system?
Yeah, we didn't, let me just correct that, we did not establish a committee for a logo, we established a committee, and out of the committee came, as we got to the defining the actual skills, as I mentioned earlier.
But he has to find that. When we need our kids to be educated and to be focused and to go on, and you spend time on a logo?
Well, we, we didn't spend time on a logo, the logo didn't take the, you know, hours to do, I mean, the hours came in defining, I'm sorry?
We're talking about it, we shouldn't.
Well, we had interests from the community on it, that's why we're engaging, we don't wanna shut our community down, they have an interest in this, and we, you know, we owe them the opportunity to state what they want to say.
On a logo, you have interest in?
That is, and as I said earlier, it's, we have, we have parents and students who are interested in, they wanted an explanation, and we're obligated to provide them with an explanation.
We are interested in changing, you were interested in changing. We were active in the bear.
Okay, so. One more? Okay, all right, so, we're gonna try and move on now, this is open, we're gonna be coming back to it, no decision has been made this evening. Our next item are bronze plaques for JFK, CB Star, Brewster High School, and the district office. Brewster, help us out with that.
So, in the fall, we're anxious again to have our construction completed and ribbon coating ceremonies to follow, at dates to be determined. So we just wanted to get the board's input on the dedication plaques. And most recently, we had a dedication at Wells Middle School, when we had the addition built back in, I mean, 2012 was completed, 2012 Wells completion. So this is a, using the same template that was used for the Wells dedication plaque, obviously swapping out the names of the board members in place at the time of the budget vote, and then also the board members in place at the time of the ribbon cutting, again, date to be determined. This is a template for JFK, date of ribbon cutting yet to be determined. But I do want to draw your attention to the bottom of the screen, John, if you don't mind scrolling. The only deviation from the Wells dedication plaque, there was a section entitled "Former Principal," and I understand from the bond approval date until the actual dedication, the principal changed over. So they wanted to list the former principal that was in place at the time of the bond approval. Similarly, we had a new superintendent in place at the time of the ribbon cutting, Dr. Hennig, but thought it might be a good idea to acknowledge former superintendent who was in place at the time of the budget, of the bond approval. So we just wanted the board's input and acknowledgement and approval to move forward, and we'll have our dedication plaques created for the ribbon cuttings in the fall. Any comments, questions?
Comments or questions from the board?
Victor, I just wanted to confirm, this is the same template that's been used before, so it's not?
Right, same template, again, we took it from the most recent Wells Middle School addition project, listing the same, you know, same board members in the same order, same administrators in the same order. Again, the only deviation, instead of listing the former principal, we're listing former superintendent.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Yeah, we moved to the hottest topic in August, the tax warrant.
Is there wireless mic?
Thank you, I haven't had a stage this big for a budget or a tax levy presentation. So tonight here, we're here to present the tax warrants and Board of Education for their approval, this is the last process, last part of our budget process that began way back in, way back in February. So I'm just gonna review a few items, and John, I think I have to point to you to click.
Yep.
High tech and low tech.
One sec.
Assess value, those are units of value assigned to a home by local property assessors. In most cases, it represents the market value of your home. In some cases, it, like in the town of Carmel, in past years, it was a unit of value that was assigned many, many years ago, as you'll see in the presentation, the town of Carmel recently went through a re-evaluation of their homes, and the impact on the assessed values and the tax rates you'll see are evident. So the definitions again, assessed values, units of value assigned by property, to properties by local assessors. Equalization rates, go back a slide, equalization rates are rates assigned by the state to compare different municipalities on an apples-to-apples basis. So in past years, we had the town of Carmel that was assessed lower than the towns of Southeast and towns of, town of Patterson. So the state, in order to equate the assessed values of the town of Carmel homes to Southeast and Patterson, they would apply what's called an equalization rate to get everybody on the level playing field. Finally, tax rates is the amount applied to each unit of assessed value for calculating a property's tax bill, and tax levy is the total amount of taxes necessary to operate the school district. Next slide, we'll go over who controls what. Town assessor set the assessed values, the state sets the equalization rates, and also star. Also to note, in addition to the tax cap, the state has also capped the increase in the star exemption. So you may notice that this year, and also in years past. Finally, the school board sets the tax levy, again, that's the total amount of taxes to be collected, and it's the only thing that the school board controls. So just to review our budget and tax levy increases for the past few years, as you can see with the implementation of the tax cap, our tax levy increases have been right around Trends for this year, total school taxable assessed values are up 2.3%, and you'll notice in the following slides that assessed value and tax rates have an inverse relationship. So the increase in the assessed value really limits the growth in the tax rates. Most significantly, I alluded to earlier, the town of Carmel reassessed the values of their homes. For more information, you can visit the town's website that has information on the reassessment. For perspective, there are only 18 homes in Carmel and a few commercial businesses, so it represents, I wanna say, 0.2% of our tax base, a very small population, but you'll see the impact on those homeowners, it could be significant. So here are the increase in assessed values of the three towns within the school district. Carmel had an increase of assessed value of 58.6%, that's a significant increase, but again, keep in mind that only 0.2% of Carmel homes are located within our school district. And again, you'll also notice the following slide with the impact on the tax rates. Town of Patterson has a, they make up about 15.4% of homes in the district. The assessed values of Patterson homes increased 1.6%. Town of Southeast represents the lion's share of homes in the district, 55.6%, and the assessed values of these homes increased on average 1.7%. So here's the impact on the tax rate change for town of Carmel. Again, the assessed value increased significantly, and the impact on the tax rate, again, because they have an inverse relationship, the tax rate decreased significantly. Town of Patterson, the assessed values increased, limiting the tax rate increase, actually a tax rate decreased by a few pennies. Town of Southeast, the same, because of the increase in the assessed values, it limits the tax rate increase by just three cents. Now we'll take a look at the non-homestead properties in our district, this is the commercial businesses that operate within our district. Town of Carmel, assessed values increased 80%, which is a significant increase, which is due in part both to the reassessment, but also an increase in certain properties, certain commercial properties in the town of Carmel, and it being such a small component of our district, a single property can have a significant increase in the total assessed value for the town. Town of Patterson actually had a decrease of 1.5%, and Southeast had an increase of And again, note the impact on the tax rates, Carmel's assessed values went way up, so their tax rate went way down, 41%. Patterson had a minimal tax rate increase, one penny. Town of Southeast had a minimal tax increase, three pennies. So to calculate your school tax bill, it's your taxable assessed value after any exemptions, whether it's a senior exemption, or a veteran's exemption, or any other exemptions that you're eligible for, multiplied by your tax rate, minus the star that the state sets for each town, and that equals your tax bill. And the star rates for each of the three towns on the next slide is here, just a little over a thousand dollars for each of the, each of the three towns. And again, star is also capped as part of the tax cap legislation. So for board action tonight, the board is being asked to approve the tax warrant, which is our total tax levy minus the total star exemption, which again is dictated by the state, and the tax warrant is the amount that we notify the local assessors to generate the tax bills. Question?
Is the star exemption automatically paid by the state, or do people have to file for it?
So the star exemption changed recently, so new homeowners have a different process for receiving their star exemption. And I believe that that process involves the income tax, filing their income tax returns. So for new homeowners, they would have to file their income taxes, and that would be an exemption on their income tax return. I also believe that the state is reevaluating whether or not they wanna do that moving forward, and I believe that they are considering reverting back to the traditional star reimbursement, which comes right off your tax bill at the start of the year.
Thank you.
Will taxpayers also continue to get the refund that's been happening for previous years, we standard the 2%? I know it's a separate conversation, but it's still part of?
Yes, you're referring to the tax freeze credit?
No, I'm sorry?
The tax freeze credit from a few years, excuse me, a few years back? Yeah, so this district participated in a program that New York State implemented a few years back, property tax relief credit. And you may notice, you may have noticed, the past few falls, usually in early November, the state would send a reimbursement check to homeowners in the district, reimbursing them for a portion of their property taxes paid, because this school district remained tax cap compliant and submitted a government efficiency plan, I believe it was two years ago. My understanding is that this is the final year of the tax, tax freeze relief credit, and that this November, there will be one last round of reimbursements for a portion of your property tax bill paid.
Okay, so that's for last year's, or that'll be for this year?
That would be this November.
This November, okay. Well, hopefully they change their mind.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll move forward to action items.
I'm sorry?
May I just ask one question, and forgive if it's not necessarily appropriate to them, but I do believe they correlate. The class size of, you know, as far as I know, K through five, you know, it's quite heavy, the case load. I mean, 24 students to one teacher, that's quite a factor. Is there any possibility of that, you know, shrinking a bit? What would it take? Is it, you know? I've been talking with other community residents, people that are in North Hill, and people that are in Carmel, and based on the amount of money that we pay in taxes as homeowners, and the school districts, you know, they're seeing their class sizes a lot smaller. And I'm just wondering, as a resident, and, you know, my kids go to the school here, is there any potential for us to see class size decrease, you know, or additional support in classrooms for, for students? I know in kindergarten, you guys do it, but I'm just wondering for the upper classes.
You're right that the, the class sizes are higher at the elementary level than they are at the secondary level. We've lost more students at the high school level, which is why the, the class sizes are lower here. We did add an additional teacher at CBSTAR, so that certainly will help. But I do think you're right, there is, that's an area for us to look at. Our board policy has been in place for a while in terms of class sizes, so we're still within the range that's established by the board. So that, I think that that certainly is something to take a look at, to see what we can do to further decrease that. A lot of, of our, you know, there are things that do happen that we don't have control over in terms of, you know, the numbers of children that we end at school year with. And June, you know, sometimes has changed fairly significantly over the course of the summer months. We saw last summer, for example, an average of 35 students, you know, coming into the school district in any particular, you know, school and grade level. So that does change things pretty dramatically, and as I said, that we don't have any control over. But we are aware, and we're looking very closely at how we can, to the extent possible, stay as far, I mean, stay below the, the high end of the number. But that's certainly something that, you know, we, we can't currently make any adjustments with if we don't, you know, if we have children still coming in, which again, is a good thing to have children coming in, because we have parents coming in, you know, who are interested in, in, you know, enrolling their children in the district. But I think that's a, a good question for us to consider for K-5.
And just to drive home your point, with the hands-on and that strategic awareness, an opportunity for teachers to provide more hands-on experience would be if they had a smaller case load, because, you know, it's hard to have one person teaching 24, giving each child an individual attention. It does, you know, it does make it a little bit harder, you know? Just a thought.
Yes, and thank you, we appreciate, you know, your suggestions, and we certainly are looking at those ways where there's more project-based learning, which again, becomes more individualized, so you're not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So you do, you know, there's a greater chance, even though that number may be a little higher, but with a different style of pedagogy, there is, you know, less of a need to, to create one, you know, style of teaching, or one way of assessing. So we're actually doing a lot of work on differentiation, which will help, but it's, but your point is well taken in terms of just the, the size.
Okay, so now we move to action items, and the first one concerns the approval of the 2017-18 tax warrant.
Yes, again, this is the formal process that notifies each town assessor, excuse me, tax collector to prepare the tax bills.
Thank you.
And I believe it requires a roll call, though.
Okay, so we'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of this important action item. Thank you to Kristin, thank you Mary Kay. Questions or comments from the board concerning this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, this is roll call, yes.
Mr. Cunningham, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Seck, your vote? Yes, after Janbo?
Yes. Thank you very much. Action item number two concerns the approval of the 2017-2018 federal state free and reduced price meal policy. That would again be?
Yes, this is a requirement for participation in the free and reduced price program for our students.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of the state free and reduced price meal program policy. Thank you, Ms. Seck, thank you, Ms. O'Brien, working her way around the table this one. Be tuned to, I had that picture. All right, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action item number three concerns the acceptance of the New York State grant and aid and approval of budget amendment number one. That sounds interesting.
Yes, and I'm sure Dr. Henny would like to thank Senator Murphy for his gracious donation to the district of $25,000.
Yes, we do, we do like to thank our Assembly, then Kevin, I mean, Mr. Byrd, as well as Senator Murphy, for their generosity in looking at the region and determining, there's a need in terms of increases in our, in our population of young people, families that qualify for free and reduced lunch, as well as increasing our English, language learners. So we do appreciate all the additional funds that come our way.
Excellent. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Glenn, thank you, Carrie. Questions or comments from the board?
Just a, I guess a comment. So it's, it's great to see that their, their hard work in securing funding, because we talk about taxes increasing, and we for a long time have not been getting, I think, the appropriate funding needed. So if they can send it to us in the way of grants from the state, thank you, we'll take it. Just want to bring that up. Absolutely.
Very good point. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero, with our deepest appreciation. Action item number four concerns the approval of the 2017-18 emergency response plan. Again, Mr. Carlson?
Yes, this is an annual requirement that the board, according to Project SAVE, approve the emergency response plans, not only for the district level, but also for each school building. Recently, the, the state has required us to adopt this prior to the start of the school year, which obviously is a good thing, because it allows us to train all of our employees before the opening of the school year, because we need to be prepared on day one. Part of the new legislation also requires that all staff be trained on emergency response planning, all staff, whether in a school building or otherwise. And each building and each department will have this training in place before September 15th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. So thank you both again, Kristen and Mary Kay. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action item number five concerns the approval of the 2017-18 emergency mutual agreement with surrounding school districts Carmel, North Salem, Pauling, and Mayackack. Mr. Carlson?
Yes, these, these agreements actually were the result of one of our district-wide tabletop drills, where we had a real life, we had a, an example of what would we do in an emergency if our buses were, were out of service? And that led to conversation with other school districts and the development of these transportation agreements, that in the event that we had an emergency which required assistance from any of the other school districts, we would all help each other out, and that's what these contracts represent.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you. We'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of this agreement. Thank you, Glenn, thank you, Diane. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action item number six is the approval of the 2017-18 mutual athletic transportation agreement. It looks so similar. This time it's Brewster, Yorktown, Brewster and Carmel, Brewster and Katona, and Brewster and Pauling.
Yes, these are agreements that we have in place with, with other school districts in the region. Oftentimes, we'll be sharing transportation if, if we're sharing athletic team, and we want to make sure that we have these agreements in place prior to the start of the school year.
And this generates some savings, all that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Carrie, thank you, Kristen. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action item number seven concerns the award of purchase contracts for instructional, athletic, and custodial supplies pursuant to competitive bid.
Yes, we participate in a cooperative bidding consortium, obviously supplies us with the best possible bid pricing through competition. There are well over two dozen school districts that participate in this cooperative bid, and I will note that we have made purchases of supplies and materials district-wide, adhering almost $200,000, and that covers over 2,000 different items. So it's really the nuts and bolts, and it's, it's really important that we secure this pricing through a cooperative bidding.
So it's good to go. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Sean, you and Diane. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action item number eight concerns the rejection of bids to integrated pest management services.
Yes, we issued a bid early in the spring for pest management services. Per our purchasing policy, it's not a requirement that we bid out the service due to the, due to the cost of, of pest management services. And although we are rejecting the bids, we will obviously continue to put into place our integrated pest management service, and we will each, each application reach out to qualified vendors and solicit votes.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. We'll take a motion, please, to the board. Thank you, Kristen, thank you, Mary Kay. Questions or comments from the board?
I just have a question. I know that there was an issue in the schools with roaches and other pests, so what was done to take care of that for the new school year, and what's going to be done on a regular basis to ensure it doesn't happen again?
Right, so, so this past year, we put in place a prevention system, that we have glue traps set up. We also have different procedures that we put in place for students as they arrive at the school. In severe cases, we will fumigate using non-chemical products, you know, natural green products. The integrated pest management plan is something that's required by New York State, so that you go through the process of applying the least hazardous approach before ultimately, if necessary, using pesticides as an absolute last resort. So we've begun the least hazardous responses, again, including glue traps, and also procedures when students arrive to school, being able to bag, you know, bag items. But we're, we're hopeful that for the start of the school year, because we've already put those processes in place, that we won't have an issue where it develops again. And we did note that once we put these procedures in place, district-wide, in each of our, each of our school buildings, that it did end the, the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Sadist?
Yeah.
Okay, other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes seven to zero. Action item number nine concerns the rescission of contract and award contract to sale of excess vehicle number 236 pursuant to competitive bid.
Yes, at the time that the, the board was able to award the sale of our vehicle, it deteriorated worse than at the bid time. So when we went to go award the vehicle to the highest responsible bidder, they indicated that they were no longer interested in the vehicle. And then what we did, we went down the line, asking the next qualified bidder if they wanted. Again, as you know, we run our transportation vehicles to the very end, until we can get absolutely nothing out of them. So this vehicle failed to start at the time of the actual transfer, and that led the bidders to withdraw their bids. So we are approving the withdrawal of the bid for the highest bidders, and then awarding it to the, I believe this is their bidder on the, on the vehicle.
Thank you. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Diane, thank you, Glenn, catch you next time. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action item number 10 concerns the approval of substitute rates. Ms. Calligan?
Yes, I'm recommending to continue the substitute employee rates as we used last year. I compared rates with neighboring districts and learned that our rates are competitive.
Thank you. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you for last time, Sean, and Diane, Carrie, next time. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes nine to zero, seven to zero. Action item number 11 concerns the approval of stipulation of settlement with SEIU. That's nice to hear.
This is an outcome of agreements filed by SEIU regarding the consideration of seniority as well as qualifications when filling vacancies.
Terrific, thank you. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this important action item. Thank you both, Diane, Mary Kay, and Kristen. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action item number 12 concerns the approval of a memorandum of agreement with the SEIU.
This memorandum of agreement is to create the title of safety inspector for the transportation department. This is an effort to align job responsibilities with appropriate titles.
Okay, sounds good. Take a motion, please, Carrie, you were batter up last time, Glenn, take a vote there. Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action item number 13, the approval of the 2017-18 tutoring agreements. Ms. Calligan? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gosh? Yes, there will be tutoring.
Thank you. These are annual contracts that we put out with these three tutoring companies that provides options for our staff when providing home instruction to students who maybe have to get illness or disciplinary consequences.
Sounds fair enough. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Kristen, thank you, Mary Kay. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Last but not least is the action item number 14, which concerns approval of policies. Second read, 5140, 5310, 5420, 8410.2, and then 8414.5. Ms. Gosh?
These policies were approved by the board as first read at the July board meeting, and prior to that, they were approved by the, and recommended to you by the policy committee.
That's terrific. So we'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Diane, thank you, Carrie. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, seven to zero. So I have a question for everybody, not in the script, but it comes up at various times. The public looks at an action item like this, 14 of them, and says, what's going on here? They're all seven to zero. Why is that? Are you rubber-stamping things, or what? Okay, how, how is it, 14 items, this session in August, which is the time of the year when we're putting things in place, is September, how is it that so many things end up being seven to zero? Honestly? Honestly?
Thank you. Do you want to answer?
Yeah, sure.
This is the work of the school, and Victor gave, okay, for me personally, I'm not speaking on me yet, for me personally, Victor, Kathleen, Michelle, gave adequate explanations. I don't know what this bus is. Victor explained what it is. We have entrusted Victor to be doing his job. He's doing his job. I don't have a question on it.
Sounds fair enough.
Yes.
Okay, you had a comment?
Well, just some of the things, for example, today, there's laws behind that, you know? So, for example, even with, it is compliance with policy. I know things go to legal, so I'm not going to vote against what my attorneys are advising us to do. And there are other things in here that have attorney influence as well. So, yes, some of those things don't come up in our discussions, but we do know that certain things we're looking at, you know, they're not open to an opinion because they've already gone through our attorneys. So, I look for that as well to see in my, you know, many of those too.
Fair enough. It's okay.
Are you open to, are you open to one more question? Sorry, I know I'm pressing my lung. Just with you, Victor, when you were talking about emergency planning training, is it evacuation drills, or is it like CPR first aid training that's mandatory?
It's evacuation drills. That's mandatory. And the state sets out certain drills, that you're supposed to have a certain number of drills by December, and then another number of drills in the spring. The emergency response training, most importantly, and this is something that we want to get out to parents in the fall, the actual responses has an acronym of SHEL, shelter in place, hold in place, evacuation, lockdown, and lockout. And those are the drills that we practice with our students and also our staff practice, but we need to do a better job of letting parents know what our responses are so that they can practice with their children, so they're aware of what to do in a lockdown or lockout. But that's something that we have planned for this fall, that we get better notification out to parents, so they're more aware of what our responses are.
Okay, and previously, I had asked this question, going back to Bobby Ernance. You guys hadn't had, did not have at the time, lunch monitors or anything, or is it that was CPR first aid training? Has that changed or improved? Have you guys had your lunch monitors and staffing in the daycare? Have they been trained on that at all, or no? Not yet.
It's not a requirement of the position. Obviously, we'd be happy if all of our monitors were trained in CPR, but it's not a requirement of the position.
Okay, so do you know if you actually have, besides the coaches in the other buildings, do you know, or the nurse, do you know if you have any of them that are?
I would have to reach out to each building principal to find out. I'm sure, and within each of the emergency response plans, there's inventory, say, an inventory, a listing of all employees who are CPR-trained within each building-level emergency response plan. So, each building principal is certainly aware of who's CPR-trained in his or her building. I don't have that information right now.
No, that's, I understand. Fair enough. My just, it's very, it's very.
And just so you know, this was an extraordinary night. We allowed a lot more discussion than we normally can. Next time we meet, we'll go back to our usual format. All questions are welcome, but you'll be invited to come up and speak at the podium so we all have a good chance of hearing you. All right, we move on now to the consent agenda. You've had a chance to review that. I'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of the consent agenda. Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, who do I go over here? Diane, okay. Questions or comments from the board concerning the consent agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Remarks, as if the board has anything else left to say, this is your chance.
I do have one more thing. No, just from earlier, when Valerie talked about the ceremony this morning, it actually was funny, because at one thought there'd just be a couple of people, and there were a lot of people that showed up. And I actually asked my daughter, who's now in middle school, you know, "What do you know about Mr. Wells?" And we tried to look online, and there wasn't anything. So, it was actually really nice that the panel that was created is there now for the students to have the information and hopefully stop by and check it out, but it was a nice little ceremony. Yep, just want to comment on that.
Remarks. Seeing none. As far as open for public remarks and information.
Hi, I'm Bobby Green with Brewster Sports Foundation.
Yes.
I was hoping for the appointment of a liaison to work with Brewster Sports Foundation and the Department of Education this evening.
Right.
But it is in the minutes, and I might have missed it. We're, I missed it, but I'm sorry. Rob's with his, as part of the consent agenda personnel, and that person's name is Dawn Rossi.
Dawn Rossi. So, it's under, let's see, it's called seasonal appointment, and the title is concession stand and equipment assistant.
So, should I pick a number? Would that be?
That would be...
Four.
Four. Four. Item number, let's see. It's actually...
It's three. Three. It's three. On the consent agenda, it's item number three, approval of personnel items.
Second to last page.
It's the under staff.
Keep going.
Do you see it?
No, but I mean, if it's here, I missed it.
Okay, wait, I see it.
The other, there you go, number four on that page, right there. Got it. Okay, and this is the person that is for Brewster Sports Foundation, the liaison.
Right, who will work closely with you and with, under Mr. Barardo's supervision to make sure there's close communication and collaboration.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you for asking. Other comments or questions in the audience? You've got one, two, remember your numbers, one, two, three, four. Number one?
I, regarding the emergency response system, the subs in the district, is there a possibility that they could consider training with subs in the district at one point in the emergency system?
Can't really change your stuff. Can you have it?
Okay. Sorry, in response to the emergency plan, they were talking about training for all the staff, would they consider, or would the board consider implementing a program where the substitutes could be trained in the event there's a substitute in the classroom during an emergency? I'm not sure, unless they've been here for a long time, they may not know what to do. And I think maybe consideration of a program.
Yeah, so, the question, whether or not we can train our substitutes, absolutely. So, part of the training that all staff are going to receive before September 15th, we have a one-page handout, which was prepared by the Department of Homeland Security that reviews, again, that acronym, SHEL. That's basically the most important thing that all employees need to understand, what the response is. All other directives would, you know, be determined by the building principal or whoever is the incident commander, depending on the type of emergency. But at a minimum, you're absolutely right, you know, providing our substitutes with the SHEL protocol, which, again, is a one-page sheet provided by Department of Homeland Security, and I'll work with Ms. Colligan to make sure that those are included in the welcome packets to our substitutes.
Okay, number two. Then back here for three and four.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Is that better? Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having the floor earlier. I know a lot of people are dissatisfied that they didn't have an option to speak at the end. I was wondering that when you opened up the floor to have a discussion on the video and the education of diversity in the community, if, one, the discussion could be absent of religion, just because not everyone in Brewster is a member of a religious community, or they may not seek comfort or the knowledge of diversity through their religion. And additionally, if the meeting could be later in the evening, there are working-class people in Brewster who can't make it to a meeting at 5:30 PM. Some people don't work in Brewster. Some people don't have regular hours. And I think those are considerations for people in the community that want to express their opinion, but might be barred from doing so.
There's a question about, a concern about clergy. They were invited because they are part of the community, and it really wasn't necessarily a decision about, you know, whether they were, they shouldn't have, or shouldn't have been here, so they were invited as a community member, so that it wasn't meant to offend anyone or to suggest, it was just, they were just members of the community. The other question you had about was time. Certainly, that was a question that we had gotten earlier when the notice went out, and so one of the things that we'll be looking to is making sure that we determine a time for the next, you know, whether it's this or some other section where we have an opportunity for people to ask questions in a, you know, civil forum, obviously, so that people don't talk over each other, and they listen to each other. So, we certainly, you know, look forward to creating that, and we'll be looking at a time, 6:30 or 7 o'clock, you know, that's certainly one of the suggested, 6:30 or 7 o'clock were the other suggestions. Well, this is the third one. How's it?
Back to the middle here. Got two people.
In my former, former life, as you know, I was a primary teacher, and my big concern is with JFK still under construction, is there going to be time for teachers to go in to do their classrooms? Because I know how important it is for a child to come into school on that first day with the excitement that they have and see this wonderful classroom set up.
Could we ask Dr. Zamborlan to please answer that question, because he's been having a lot of those conversations?
Are the issues getting our certificate of occupancy?
Oh, could you take a mic, Dr. Zamborlan? Thanks.
Are the issues getting our certificate of occupancy, which we're hoping to get on the 31st, which is next Thursday? And we plan on opening the building up on Friday through the long weekend, and I'll open up at 9:03. I sent the notice to the faculty a couple weeks ago, and that's what we're looking to do. We're trying to arrange a couple of tours for people, the staff, to go in on the superintendent conference days. But with all their materials now, we're getting pulled out of the storage trailers, we're getting put back into the classrooms. A lot of new furnitures are already being built, so they'll be walking into those new environments. The problem will be, again, sorting a lot of that material at the very beginning of the year, so literally empty the building.
So, in other words, they have to build it up later, maybe?
If they, not asking them, providing the opportunity to do so.
We know primary teachers.
I know primary teachers, and they're not very vocal in letting you know that they need to get in, and you know that I'm married to a elementary teacher, and I explained that I will just open the building up to anyone who's available and would like to come in, that we would do so. And we will bring in aides and monitors also to lend extra hands. And to be honest with you, talking about the community here and being housed here in the high school, many high school teachers have offered and said, and people just come in and say, "Can we help?" You know, so everybody understands what we're going under, but the teachers here are the ones that are going to face it.
I'm Lynn Olson. I'm a second grade teacher at JFK, and I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for having the open forum. Can you hear me okay? For having the open forum and for offering in such a respectful way. I do want to say, though, that sometimes the intentions are not the same as the results. This is something that we teach in our classrooms, and in fact, a lot of the strategic coherence plan has been gradually been put in place. I've been here for 20 years. My classroom looks nothing at all like it did even 10 years ago. So, I just want to make that clear. I know, Ms. Milson, that wasn't your intention. Your intention was your excitement over the strategic coherence plan, but you will not find rose in my classroom or any of the classrooms of my colleagues at JFK. So, I just wanted to clarify that. I know that wasn't what you meant, but I wanted to clarify that. The other thing I wanted to say, and I'll stay in my two minutes, is the strategic coherence plan is awesome, and clearly, the fact that so many people turned out tonight means we have a problem. So, I'd like, as a member of the Brewster community, to see the strategic coherence plan, all those wonderful things, used to address what's clearly a problem in our community. I think all those Cs will be really helpful, but we have to get after it, and I am only speaking for myself here, but I'm saying, I want to be part of that process. We do have a problem. We can't pretend we don't. Let's get after it with all those good Cs.
Thank you. Good job. Other comments or questions from the audience?
Thank you.
I'm not missing anyone? Okay?
Just thank you. I should say thank you. I could talk to you all night.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of an SEIU negotiation update. We have a fingerprinting of employees discussion and a Putnam County transportation discussion with our attorney, and no action will be taken. I don't believe we're returning to public session.
Thank you.
But those are, that's it.
That's great. So, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? We're heading off to exec now, folks. Thank you for attending.